I'd like to call the meeting to a wooder at 6:00 P. M.
I pledge allegiance to the Library of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dr. Rose.
In the short pursuit of the Public Meetings Act notice that this meeting was emailed to the Herald Leaver Director of County Clerk who posted on PCCC website and voted board on July 26, 2021.
Thank you, Dr. Rose. Roll call.
Along my rep, she's in. Trustee Drakeford, here. Trustee Skitch, here. Trustee Golden.
Here.
Trustee Montez, here. Trustee Moody.
Present.
Trustee Nutter.
Present.
Trustee Powell. Trustee Smith. Vice Chair Tannen.
Present.
Chairman Marco.
Present.
Okay, we need to be game and turn the meeting back over to Dr. Rose.
Yep. A special night here tonight because one of the things that's on the agenda this evening is bestowing professor emeritus status on Professor Ed Mosley, who is head. For those who don't know Professor Mosley, I guess, Chairman and I were on a meeting last night where they were praising someone, you know, who deserved no praise.
Praise too.
Okay? And they were saying all these nice things about them and, you know, kind of making it up as they went along. Everything I'm going to say now is not made up. Okay? So let me assure you, I'm not exaggerating one bit here. There, in the history of the college, and it's been here since 1979, there has been no more popular professor than Ed Mosley. He has, I will tell you, as you know, as I'm out of the bath, meet people, you know, who went to the college, you know, in the early eighties, in the nineties, inadvertently what they usually say, how's Professor Mosley? How's Professor Bookfider? Typically, typically those are two people.
Are you there?
Oh.
Okay, sure.
Yep, she's there. Hi, Sharon.
Thank you very much.
All right. Very few people could fill a class on Friday night. Okay? That's the true test of a professor, who, when you schedule a class at 5:30 on Friday night, you know, normally if you get 10 people to take it, that's a lot. He filled lecture halls. How many years did you do that for halls?
Long time.
A long, a very, very long time. I don't think there's any role that at the college that has employed him. He's been an administrator, he's been a faculty member, he's been a chair, he supports the foundation, he supports our students, he supports, he supports everything that we do. He's been, he's been a part of the Faculty Association, he's been part of Academic Council. I don't think there's a role here at the college he, he hasn't played, you know, it's, the college started in 1971, he came in '79, and it just has been a huge part of the history of the college. And I don't think, I don't think there's any individual in the history of the college who has taught more students than Professor Mosley. I don't, I don't think it's even close. We, Merrill does, we have, we have this provision in the faculty contract, which a rare, a very rarely used provision, that if you exceed, what is it, 300 students, 300 students, you get, you get extra money, that if you teach that many, because, you know, that means you're incredibly, he's many, most years, he's the only one who's ever got it. I'm serious. We call it the Mosley Provision of the Contract. So, and I, he does not want this, he does not want to be here tonight, he's made that very clearly, he wants nothing to do with it. He said, you gotta let us give you some honor here tonight. So I just have a few people in the audience who would like to say something, Barry, you want to? Whatever you want. You can come up, you can stay, whatever, whatever works.
It was a commercial on TV many years ago about a brokerage, a large brokerage firm named EF Hutton. Scene opened up with a gathering of people sitting in a room talking. Everyone was animated and moving around. Suddenly, someone walked in and started talking. Everyone froze, and the voiceover said, "When EF Hutton talks, everyone listens." That's Ed Mosley. Ed did command the floor very often. He didn't speak just for the sake of speaking, and when he did, he commanded the room. Everyone caught their ear and listened because he was so respected by his peers. I've known Ed for about 40 years now, I can't believe it's 40 years. A few years after I came to the college in the eighties, I found myself on a committee that was charged with purchasing a computer to be used for administrative applications and for the academic computer science program. After the committee met for a number of months, it became apparent to me that the solution was for the college to purchase two computers, one for the academic side and one for the administrative side. The president of the college at the time, that's Steve, wanted to purchase one computer to serve both. Each of the members of the committee was asked to send their recommendations to the president. What should I do? I was untenured. Do I send him the recommendation for the two computers that he, computers that he did support? Everyone told me, "Talk to Ed." And so I did, and Ed gave me the sage advice. It all boiled down to one simple concept, he said, "Be true to yourself and all, but all will be well." So I recommended the two computers, and that's what the college did. And here I am, 40 years later. And that is how it went. If you needed advice, the advice was, "Go ask Ed, go talk to Ed." Just, Ed wasn't, isn't flashy, just sound advice. I was lucky enough to have Ed serve with me as vice president of the Faculty Association for over 15 years. The faculty owe you a great deal, a great debt of gratitude, Ed, and on behalf of them, I thank you for all of your service and all you've done for the faculty. I still value your wise counsel. A year and a half ago, you stepped down from your vice presidency, vice presidency position, and I miss you very, very much. As well as wise, Ed is a very kind person, treats people well, he served as Chair of Humanities and Social Sciences Department for many years, dealing and solving faculty and student problems with grace and wisdom. I've been trying to find what the one word that I can use to describe Ed. The one thing that comes to mind is the Jewish word, mensch. A mensch as a person always does the right thing. To me, that is just about the highest compliment you can give, give to a person. Ed, you're a mensch, and I'm so proud to call you my friend. Thank you.
Well, I guess Ed and I go back many, many years. We both started back in 1979 as full-time faculty at the instructor rank. And we both made it over the years through the rank and file, and we both became full But we did not feel that teaching in the classroom was really sufficient, and, you know, in so many ways, let me just focus on Ed now. Ed was a stellar professor by all means and on any actually level you can think of. His contribution did not stop just with his colleagues, it was really across the board. The Sturists loved him, and that goes without saying. But it was not just the Sturists, it was the faculty and definitely the administration as well. You know, when I try to think of Ed, he strikes me as a unique human being, a great friend and a great colleague, and I'm not exaggerating when I say that. He is compassionate, he is professional, dedicated, but most of all, he is trustworthy. What Merrill said, that anytime you needed somebody who would basically give you his honest opinion, without any sugar added, go to Ed and talk to him, and he would give you his perspective and then some. Ed would definitely leave his mark and legacy at Passaic County Committee College, and definitely the school would not be the same without him. However, life is such, and we all have to accept reality at some point soon or later. Ed, it was a pleasure having worked with you, having known you, we will miss you a lot, but we wish you the best of luck on your retirement journey.
Thank you very much.
Hi, Ed.
Hi, Jackie.
I remember the first time I met you, I think the president and the vice president had resigned from here. And I leaves, now I know, I didn't know what I was doing, so I rely on Ed because at least he had been here 10 more years than I had. But we got through it, okay, and we're still getting through it. He's been a department chair for about 20, 25 years now.
Twice.
Twice, yes. He always dragged him out of retirement by being a chair when we need him. He's been a tremendous support and help to me. And I also want to bring up one other thing. Academically, of course, we know that he's been a teacher here and he's affected the lives of many students, but he also had a career as a psych practitioner, correct? At New York Beth Israel. And he, I think he worked in the crisis section.
35.
35 years. And so what does that mean? That means that in terms of mental health concepts and mental health advice, he was able to advise me many times on. So, I'll miss you very much. I want you to know that you're welcome to come to the department chairs meeting.
Sure.
So, what, what, what the board will do later this evening, what it votes is, I assume you're going to accept my recommendation, that Ed would be one of the very few professor emeritus at, at the college, and what that, you know, it's, it's, it's the highest honor we can give a faculty member. And basically what it means, that's a title he keeps forever. And it's, you know, you'll always be invited to graduation if he wants to come, because he's probably the professor who has been at every graduation, you know, you can mention he's, even when people didn't have to show up, Ed was there to cheer on his students. So, you know, you'll, you'll, you'll be a part of the college forever, as much as you want to be or don't want to be, or whatever you want, you know, it, it, it's part of, because the college is, is you, and you want a college, so.
Can I say something?
Absolutely. Or, I told you, you didn't have to, but you could say whatever you want.
I wasn't going to say anything, but I have to feel proud to say something about me. I'm only teasing. I'd like to thank all of you. I know, I know you didn't come just for me, you came for other things. The fact that you're here makes me feel good. But there's some special thanks I want to give to some people here. First, starting with this gentleman. This gentleman's been here X number of years, and has turned this college around. There were times when we thought the college was going to close, there were times when I had made comments like, "We should take the word college hell of a title." Yeah, that was crazy. So I would like to thank Steve for being a college president who's brought in some good people, Jackie Bay, Basil, some other good people, and has given Passaic County what it needs, and still giving it. I also want to thank him for something else. I'm going to tell you something, I don't, I don't know if you remember this. Basil, I don't know if you remember, you're an honest Basil. Oh, thanks, Steve, for taking me to New Orleans.
Yes, all I remember.
Why you remember?
All I remember.
I didn't even have to remember. And having some hurricanes. And seeing Billy Joel.
That's right. Well, to tell the rest of the story. He had never had one of those hurricane things before, and he pretty much passed out that much.
True.
It wasn't fresh, that's why. So that's the first story. Second story involves Dr. Jeanne. I want to thank you for taking me to San Francisco. She had gone into the souvenir shop to look at things, so the rest of us, we're all single, with the baby and myself, are looking in the window, and she was acting like someone who probably could benefit from somebody who has some mental illness. If you walk past the store, you saw, and you're like, "Is she a customer? Is she a client?" But it could be. Also, Jackie came to me and asked me, "Would I be department chair again? Because what happened at the college?" So I said, "Under one condition, I can do what I want." I didn't mean that in the background, I meant to like, I wasn't going to be like the person who was in that position of every five minutes coming upstairs saying, "We got a crisis, we got a crisis." I wasn't going to be that person. If I'm coming up those stairs, we got a crisis. And one Sunday, I called Jackie at home, so she said, "Oh, what happened?" "I broke my ankle." Also, I was able to get a grant for a program called Career Beginnings, where we took students from high schools, mentored them, combined them with all kinds of different things. Got $5 million. So I had to go to Eastside High School to meet with John Clark, the principal, because Eastside was one of those. The day that I went to.
His assistant principal's on the phone right now.
The day I went to Eastside, there was a knock on the door, and who was there? Morgan Freeman. So you never know at this place. So Basil and Jackie had me buried in the coffin already. I'm not sure if I'm coming back, but I will, I, right, I estimated that I had about 24,000 students during my time. And they, I thank them the most because they gave me the opportunity to do what I needed to do in the classrooms. Plus, if you attend my class, we talk about anything and everything. So thank you very much for everything. I appreciate it, more than you know. I don't really feel that good tonight, but I said, I was going to call out, call that one and say I'm not coming, that one would have beat me up. So, thank you very much. Ninety.
I told you it wouldn't be that bad.
Your act was right, and the food was good, too, by the way.
We'll take some cookies for a run.
Oh, cookies. I'll take one by a pound, I'm going to speak. No, because Basil, next to her, I was just speaking, I was like, "It's still, it's warm, it's not going to be bad."
First order of business is the consideration of the minutes of the October 19th, 2021 Board Trustees Meeting. Are there any corrections in the minutes? Okay, no corrections here. Now, can I have a motion to Resolution Number One, approval of the October 19th minutes?
I love it.
Second.
Roll.
Trustee Drakeford.
Yeah.
Trustee Skitch.
Yes.
Trustee Golden.
Yes.
Trustee Montez, here.
Yes.
Trustee Moody.
Yes.
Trustee Nutter.
Yes.
Trustee Smith. She there?
She is there. Sharon?
Sharon.
Yes.
Yes, thank you. Vice Chair Tannen.
Yes.
Chairman Marco.
Yes. All right. Turn it back over to Dr. Rose. State law requires in New Jersey that an organization of the Board of Trustees be held in November. I take the gavel for, for my one time a year, and the first thing we have are your nominations for Chairperson of the Board of Trustees.
I nominate Dennis Montez, Marco.
Is there a second nomination? Are there any other nominations for Chair of the Board? I hope you should have closed the nominations, second, all in favor of closing nominations?
Aye.
Okay, back to you. Mark, one time.
Now, open floor for nominations for Vice Chairperson.
I know we may have a bad one.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, second, okay. Are there any other nominations? You're none? Two by voice vote?
Sure.
Sure? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Nays? Nays? Sentients? No sentients? The ayes have it.
Congratulations. All right. Fairly short agenda tonight. We have some policy matters. First, the annual notice of meetings, they're all on the third Tuesday as, as, as is our, has become our tradition at this point. We have a first reading on the Board Policy of Readmission. Basically, what the change is, I, I, I cannot tell you why we had this policy in the first place, it's been here for forever, but basically, if a student left the college for a semester and to be readmitted to the college, they'd have to go through a process. And part of that was, you know, in the days before cell phones and email addresses, these all predate, you know, having all of those kind of things, it was basically being able to communicate with the student because we really, unless we, you know, people moved a lot, and unless we could get a new address from them, or if they moved, sometimes they changed the phone number, and we'd have no way to communicate with the student. So it's time to modernize the policy, and the recommendation is, is that we go from six months, basically, to two weeks. And there's really just no reason to go through the process, you know, while, while people may change an address, they don't change your email address quite as often, and they certainly, you know, if they have a cell phone, they're not changing that number quite as often. So we'll still have a way to communicate with students.
You don't have to, these students don't have to appear in person, do they? They can do it by Zoom or.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Light of this.
Oh, absolutely, oh, absolutely. It's, it's, it's just, not having to go through a formal process. Would that be what I, anything you're here?
No, I think this is something that, well, you know, it varies for students on the month of match of school, you know, so I think that's, primarily what it is.
So nothing more complicated than that? No. They're fairly simple. Articulation agreement between PCCC and Ramapo College. Just, just basically to fill you in at this point, you know, this is for an articulation agreements with, with Ramapo, a Bachelor of Science in Accounting, Finance, Information Technology Management, Management and Marketing, Bachelor of Arts in Economics and International Business. You know, we are, and again, Dennis was on a call last night, and we were talking about these three plus one programs. We're the only one who has one in all of Northern New Jersey, and our partner is Ramapo. You know, it's, it's, it's taking off, and it's, and it's doing well. Basically, for those who don't know, this is a program where students can spend their third year here, that after they've graduated with an associate degree, they spend another year here paying our tuition, taking third-year courses that will apply toward the baccalaureate, and then they, the fourth year, they would go to Ramapo College and complete their degree. If we get enough students, Ramapo may be even willing to come on campus here and, and teach the fourth year. You know, what it does is, you know, basically, you're paying our tuition for three years, which is a lot lower, and it gives, it gives a very affordable baccalaureate degree for Passaic County residents. And we had our first graduates of the program last May, and it's really starting to take off, and I think it's going to be a great, it's a win-win for both Ramapo and us, so it's something we're, we're proud of and happy that it's working, and you're going to be seeing more of these types of agreements with Ramapo going forward because it looks like we found a really good partner to work with, so. And this is also something, you know, we've got some, some of our K-12 educators here, you know, today, you know, one of the things is, is as, as we're doing dual enrollment, where high school students are taking programs, when you start, you know, if a student can get 30 credits while in high school, then they come here, take one year, and then take the third year here, which, you know, basically, three years after getting out of high school, you could, you could have a college degree, a baccalaureate degree. And, you know, that's, you know, and it, and we're even talking about some early college programs where students would be able to get an associate degree at the same time they're getting a high school diploma. That's tough for a lot of high schools, that's not for everybody. But, you know, but, but for those who that works for, you know, it's, it's basically two years after graduating from high school you can get. And, you know, college is not inexpensive, as we know, and this would be a way to make it very affordable for students, so, you know, it's, it, yeah, it's all good. Purchases of goods and services, happy to answer any questions about some of these things here, as you can see, again, a lot of, a lot of IT purchases going, going on as, as we had before, and happy to answer any questions about any of that that you may have.
We're going to go into executive session, so may I have a motion on Resolution Two to meeting Executive Session?
Trustee Drakeford?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Golden?
Yes.
Trustee Montez, here.
Yes.
Trustee Nutter?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Vice Chair Tannen?
Yes.
Chairman Marco?
Yes. Board will meet Executive Session for approximately 20 minutes to discuss personnel, contract matters, matters protected by attorney-client privilege. No action was taken in the Executive Session. Meeting is called back to order. Board met in Executive Session to discuss personnel, contract matters, and matters protected by attorney-client privilege. No action was taken in the Executive Session. We have a motion to adopt Consent Resolution Number Three, approving the following items set forth in the memorandum dated November 16, 2021. I'll repeat, I'll repeat what's in that. Annual Notice of Meetings. First reading of the Board Policy, D-103 regarding readmission. Articulation agreement with Ramapo College of New Jersey. Purchases of Goods and Services. Personnel actions as listed in Personnel Actions Memorandum.
Which includes the support staff contract and the administrators' contract.
Right, correct. Motion.
Do you need the temporary pay scale?
That's in the personnel actions. That's all, I just, that was included in Personnel Actions.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, but I just wanted them to know that it was. That's why they're here.
That's right. It was important to announce.
About other.
Yeah, I have Nutter moved.
Nutter?
Yes.
Roll.
Trustee Drakeford?
Yes.
Trustee Skitch?
Yes.
Trustee Golden?
Yes.
Trustee Montez, here.
Yes.
Trustee Moody?
Yes.
Trustee Nutter?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Thank you.
Vice Chair Tannen?
Yes.
Chairman Marco?
Yes. Now you.
Any remarks from the, any of the trustees?
Public? Public? Yes.
I just wanted to add that the Department of Education changed the rules for substitutes until 2023. If you have 30 college credits as opposed to 60 now, and you are enrolled, and enrolled, enrolled in a accredited college, you have to be enrolled in an accredited college, in 20 years of age, you can now apply for your substitute license, and you can become a substitute teacher, but this is only until 2023, you know, your substitute license is for five years, so 20 years old, 30 college credits, and enrolled in an accredited college, you are able to apply for your substitute license.
Think I'll retire and become a substitute.
Yeah, that may be $200 a day.
Well, we certainly, we, we certainly probably have at least 2,000 or 2,500 students a year at the college who have 30 credits or worse. So I think that's something we could help with.
Yeah.
Something to talk about.
Just don't bombard my office, only have more certain.
We'll figure it out.
Okay, any remarks from the public?
Yes. Thank you very much. My name is Patricia Nderos, and I'm the president of the Administrator Association. And I would like to thank the Board of Trustees, Dr. Rose, for passing our contract. We are willing, the Administration Association are willing to help in any way we can for our mission, for our students, and for the community. Thank you very much for passing it. Thank you.
And as I, and as I said to the board when we closed session, when we were discussing your contract, just what a, what a pleasure it has been to work with both the administrators and support staff. And we're currently in negotiation with the faculty right now. And I don't think any of these things could have, could have gone better or could be going better, so.
Hi, my name is Edwin Figueroa. I am the Vice President of the Support Staff Association. I just want to echo the same comments. We would like to thank the Board of Trustees, and we also would like to thank Dr. Rose for the excellent work and the patience and the support of her.
Thank you very much. Yes.
I just wanted to hand this back to you. I'd like to wish everybody Happy Thanksgiving, and I hope that I'll be here December.
That is the plan.
Thank you, Mark. Okay, anyone else here or no one else? We have a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Remove it.
Thank you. Trustee Drakeford?
Yes.
Trustee Skitcher? Trustee Golden?
Yes.
Trustee Martinis Dioda?
Yes.
Trustee Moody?
Yes.
Trustee Nutter?
Yes.
Trustee Smith? Vice Chair Tannen?
Yes.
Chairman Marco?
Yes. Thank you, meeting's adjourned.
Happy Thanksgiving, everybody.
Happy Thanksgiving.